City Council, Chamber of City Hall for the study session of the city council. Call to the meeting to order and entertain the roll call, please.
Go forward.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
Rothie.
Present.
Schneider.
Here.
And Myers is absent.
Yes, ma'am. We'll move to item C, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Move forward to item D, Approval of the Agenda.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Schneider, council discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section E is public comments for items not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member there any public comments this evening. Seeing nobody rise, we'll move to section F, the Study Session Calendar. Item number one is the Golf Commission Annual Report to the City Council.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, it's time for our annual report from the Golf Commission. I have chairperson Brent Jones here to present tonight. We also have two other members of the commission present, pro shop and golf staff, and some former golf staff, and Dennis Jones is blessed with his attendance as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brent. We're going to get a couple of things started here and get going.
Perfect.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to be here. As you said, my name is Brent Jones. I'm here to give the 2022 Golf Commission Report. As you know, we probably meet the second Tuesday of the month, right here across the hall, generally for an hour, hour and a half. Commission members include myself, Sally Thorson, Jerry Anker, Ron Rucci, they're in attendance, Angie Hubbard, and our city council liaison is Julie Myers. The Golf Commission is guided by two complimentary mission statements. We are guided generally by the broader Leisure Services Department mission statement, which reads, "We believe in making the good life better by providing safe, modern, well-maintained, and aesthetically pleasing environments for the community of today and tomorrow." Specifically, we are guided by the Waverly Golf Course mission statement. The Waverly Golf Course commits to provide scenic and social experiences of exceptional value, embracing our historic past and our progressive future in the greater Cedar Valley. Waverly's municipal golf course embraces these values: excellence, welcoming customer service, teamwork and loyalty, diverse opportunities. These values together hopefully lead to memorable experiences. As you know, we are only an advisory commission, and I'm just going to summarize these powers and duties. You guys have it in front of you, and you've seen it before. One, we make recommendations on the golf course and pro shop budgets. Two, we recommend long-term capital improvement programs. Three, we provide input on fees and charges. Four, we recommend policies concerning the golf course and pro shop. Five, we promote golf course activities for the benefit of all citizens. Six, we provide input on contracts relating to golf operations. Seven, we provide an annual report to the city council. That's why you've got me tonight. Eight, we provide any information requested by the city administration. Nine, we coordinate activities with the Leisure Services Director to enhance communication with the city. And finally, we coordinate activities with city administration to facilitate efficiencies of equipment and personnel. Staff. We're guided by the Director of Leisure Services, Garrett Ryrdan, 16 years with the city. We do have a new office coordinator, Kate McGlaughn. She replaces Jen Johnson, who's moved within the city to another job. Now, the golf course has two full-time and approximately 12 part-time staff. Our lead grounds specialist is Chris Miller, who's in attendance tonight, and his assistant, the grounds maintenance specialist, is Ben Nichols. He's also with us tonight. But we should note that Dennis Jones, why don't you stand, Dennis? Dennis Jones retired this year after 42 years with the city. So please join me in...
I recommend you.
Retiring.
Thank you again, Dennis. And then, of course, we've got Jordan Davis. He's been with the city approximately 11 years. He's our PGA Pro and also the manager of the pro shop. He oversees a staff of about 13 part-timers. Golf Course Accomplishments. Most of you have probably seen the beginnings of the installation of the new split-rail vinyl fence, replacing the wood fence. Looks awesome. We've also purchased a new pump that's going to help control the algae on the pond on number seven. Staff has moved nine trees from around town within Waverly out to the golf course. And one thing we're very proud of is we did meet our goal of $30,000 through private donations for new trees. We should note that Trees Forever really helped at the end with a donation of $4,000. We have some pictures. I think you can see them there. You can see the difference between the wood and the vinyl fencing and how much better it looks. Some pictures of moving trees. Glorious picture of that new pump. It's very exciting.
So when you say moving trees, you mean like moving trees?
Yeah, with the trees, they...
Okay.
That's in the picture. I mean, they were able to... I'm not sure you can say better word than draw.
Please come up, sir. I've always wanted to tell him that.
Well, I think we got, what, six of them from Jeff Dirks, and he's moved in from various locations. We brought two pines from a gentleman here in town that donated them to us and pulled five out of Paul Schwell's old pine nursery and moved them on the course. So...
Thank you.
I've never been able to have a tree.
All right. Pro Shop accomplishments. In July of 2021, we hosted the 88th Annual Waverly Invitational. 141 players participated in this two-day individual stroke play golf tournament. This is the longest-running invitational tournament in the state of Iowa. It's quite an accomplishment for not only our town but for our golf course. In July of 2021, Jordan hosted a four-day junior golf camp with over 40 junior golfers. In August of '21, the pro shop hosted their annual junior golf fundraiser. 124 players raised nearly $3,000. Also, in '21, the weather in December was quite conducive to golf. We were able to open the course four days for over 100 golfers. Be nice if that could happen again this year. Keep our fingers crossed. At the end of the 2023 calendar year, the Waverly Golf Course had produced 28,541 rounds, which is the highest total on record, beating the previous record by over 3,000 rounds. Prior to the 2022 season, the pro shop sold a record 339 season passes, including a record 121 junior passes. This is 29 more junior passes than last season and 118 more junior passes than five years ago. In my opinion, this is a very encouraging... This is very encouraging and shows that the staff's efforts on promoting junior golf are working. Also, in May of 2022, Jordan began a new program for adult beginner golfers entitled Ground Floor Golf and successfully graduated classes in May and June. And the Waverly Golf Course was once again represented in the PGA Junior League. 12 kids made up our team and competed against area golf courses. We have some slides. The top one is the junior camp. The bottom one, in their blue shirts, is the PGA Junior League. Also, some slides of the adult graduates of the ground floor golf. Looking to the future. The Golf Commission has provided input to MSA about incorporating a driving range and learning center into the Memorial Park master plan. Also, earlier this year, you, the city council, voted to purchase the country club. As you know, the city will take over control of the club by the end of this year. Staff and commission members are discussing what the future of the club looks like and what possibilities exist. Finally, in conclusion, I'd like to say thank you. The commission recognizes the dedication and support of the city council to the city golfing activities and facilities the committee... the community has available. The commission hopes to continue to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Waverly by providing natural areas and facilities for the golfing and non-golfing citizens of today and the future. And if there's any other questions, I'll try to answer them when we've got the staff that could help too.
Well, I just want to say thank you to the commission, and I think that the numbers with the growth in junior golf and the beginning golfers and the number of passes, I mean, it's a testament to the hard work of the staff, the commission, Jordan. I mean, you're running a really great operation, and so I'm really thankful for all of your efforts.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah. And I, you know, last week, there was a town hall by MSA about the new, sort of their preliminary draft of the park, and I guess I'd like to hear from you, Brent, about your ideas about the driving range, the training center, what you envision for up at the top of the hill. And I know you're just in preliminary discussions, but what do you think we'll end up with up there?
Well, I'm certainly not sure. I think there is room to have some type of a learning center, some type of a driving range. It may be condensed. But there's... I, in my opinion, there's definitely room to do that. This town needs that. Junior golf, adult instruction, people just want a driving range. I go... I've been to the one on Airline Highway probably a dozen times this year. Doesn't matter if I go in the morning, the afternoon, or after supper. There's people there any hour of the day, and not just a few people, quite a few people. Is it going to take some planning? For sure. You know, I'm not an architect. I don't know what the budget is. We may have to move a little dirt on that hill. I'm not... I'm not sure. I think with some foresight, that could certainly happen. And still have all the other amenities, the green space, the pool, the walking trail.
I'll just say that, you know, I've been hours away from Waverly and spoke to people, you know, at conferences or that kind of stuff. And even people that aren't engaged in city business where I'm at have commented, "I played golf up there, you know, my line of work full-time, you know, down in Grunde Center and that area. Yeah, we make the trek up there." Somebody told me that there's a group that of about 80 golfers, you probably know who they are, Jordan, that travel around and hit different courses, and they say that they always look forward to their time in Waverly. You know, at this particular course, both of our courses, but in particular the city course, just how nice it is. I want to say directly to you, thank you for your leadership as the chair, not to dispose the extra effort by the rest of the commission, but thank you for your leadership and being kind of the point person with Garrett to keep things rolling, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Thanks for the presentation. Move forward to item two, Review Past Strategic Planning Documents and the Waverly Economic Development 2022 through 2027 and City of Waverly Strategic Plan of August 2018.
All right. Woo! Exciting or what? Because it's... It wasn't, I'm going to tell you right now. I just wanted to touch base quick, and I say quick, I guess that's relative, but quick, on the strategic plans that we've done. One is four years old. At the time, it was larger community plan. Richard Furzman came in and they kind of walked through a lot of the different items that we were talking about, looking back at the time. And it's interesting, this is pre-COVID, pre... It's a whole different focus than where we are now. At the time, it was more community-based, where a lot of the initiatives that were finished or things that should have been accomplished were to be done by the community. While some of them were, a lot of them weren't, it was just a whole different style of strategic plan being done. You know, the larger, more dominant things that we deal with now from housing and childcare, that's in the other one that we did, that really wasn't as much of a factor in this. I don't know how many of you looked at or taken the time to look at it for tonight, but there's honestly just not a lot that I want to go through this. It's a whole different era, and it's hard to say four years ago that was the case, but it certainly is. This is not anything close to what Waverly is now or has been looking forward to. I mean, you can certainly point to a lot of small things that were accomplished, some that weren't, but in the broad scope of it, I'm not sure how relevant it is. So unless somebody really has a passion to walk through this and all the little things that were done or weren't done, everything that we as a city were supposed to do, financially, economic development, infrastructure, it got done. So we just... We got it done, and that I can say with confidence in here. A lot of the smaller items that were a little harder to measure may or may not have been finished. We really don't know. I don't think we tracked how many volunteers were needed across the community. I mean, I don't even know how we would have done that. So I guess I'll just bluntly ask you, is there something you want to go through, talk about at all from four years ago? I really don't see personally a lot that is going to benefit us going into this year or next year. I'm open for any discussion, comments on that.
I mean, I would suppose the one thing that I definitely see in that plan is, well, and continuing, is the need for housing, for affordable housing, and the need for childcare. I think it's something that we worked on. The number of new housing units in town, amount of affordable housing, has definitely gone up, but, I mean, the demand has also gone up. I mean, we're... I don't even know if I can say we're keeping up with the demand. I mean, we saw there's a huge need. We did what we could add to it, and we still need to add to it. So, I mean, it's kind of like, I'm glad we identified it as a need, but it's not going away either. So, I mean, I think that a lot of things we can look at here and see, these are things that we identified as a need. Some of them have kind of gone away, but I think most of them, we still need. There's still need for, you know, better communication and marketing. So at least we made a decision on the Green Bridge.
Like I said, all our stuff got done, so...
What you said, that the climate has sort of changed with how people are doing this. I mean, the conferences you go to, the people you talk to, is, are cities changing how they do this? I mean, should we look at... I don't know that we need to do that this year, but should we look at doing this again but with a different format or with different focus or...
I don't think so. Like I said, you know, four years ago, there were other things that we were doing. There's a lot of online things, a lot of things that were just menacing, and it wasn't really big core items. You know, there were a few, as Brian said, but I really point to the more recent economic development strategic plan that was done, the council participated in, and Frankie took over. So this is really your new strategic plan. This is not really economic development even. And it's got five core things in it, and that's where we go back to Brian said. It's got business development, workforce, housing, childcare. So business development, when you go through the points and the items that were done, staff are still doing that. They're trying to help businesses expand. They're trying to keep things going. They're trying to keep postings, et cetera. You know, I walked through this, I felt very good about where we are, but everything has changed even in a year or so of this. The markets are different. The expansions, you don't see as much. It's very, very different than what it was even when this was starting to be developed. You know, we've got a chicken and the egg thing with workforce and housing. Which one will bring which? Well, obviously, the demand for housing is there. We've talked about it. Mr. Schneider brought it up before when we were talking about recruiting people, et cetera. Well, there's nowhere for them to live. So how do you address housing? Which is probably one of the bigger things that I do want to talk to you about tonight is your thoughts on what do we do with our housing? You know, is it a priority or is it not a priority? If it's a priority, then we need to start looking at some of these areas, Irving School site, and let's figure something out. Talking about it, discussing 19 possible scenarios is great, but we're no closer than we were a year and a half ago to get anything actually done there. We can bring all we want, but it's not going to be met with a move to go forward. It doesn't do any good. And there's some smaller infill lots, but the hardest part is there's two different issues. You have open lots sort of there. We have multiple subdivisions with open lots that people are not building on or buying necessarily, and we have open ground that could be developed that's not being developed either. You know, it's been probably five, six years ago, we took a hard look at, do we look at incentives for these things? Which I hate, I cringe even saying that because it is a horrible program to go down. Incentivizing these things, it never stops it, and no one will ever build without it going forward. Any city that's done it regrets it. After building it up so good for you, is that something we should look at? Do we look at that for our homeowners? Is it tax rebate plans? Is it those kind of things to help generate the lots that are sitting and available to be built on? Or do we shift focus into developing more land, which we already have a chunk developed that isn't selling? And that, again, it feeds right into, is that how we're going to get workforce to come here? Is that how we're going to get businesses in because we now have a workforce? It is a lot of back and forth that we're really struggling with the staff. We talked about this, is what is the linchpin to pull it and things get better? Because everything depends on everything else. Even childcare, the demand is there, well, at least the facility is doubling in size. That's coming along very well. I'd be curious, when it's done, now what does that look like from the demand standpoint? The weight and the lists and, you know, how does that help? Does it fill up quickly? Does it fill up at all? Where does that go? So that's one factor that we've been able to address. But that's where I guess we're stuck as well, and I kind of want to hear from all of you. You know, it's chicken and egg. Which do you tackle first?
On the supply side, on childcare, we've added the one to the south as well. You know, we went on the strategic plan, went from 13 pages down to six, so I think that's really good progress.
I agree.
Some of these cities, their plans are entangled, and they have plans for plans for plans, and it really gets quite unwieldy. But how much of the housing, though, does everyone think is really at the mercy of on the builder's side? On the supply side, I mean, you know, these lots are attractive, but if there's no one to build them, then we're competing against other lots across northeast Iowa.
Right.
So...
And that's where we've tried to talk to some of the builders and some of the issues, and it's really all over the board. Some, it's material costs, some, it's labor shortage, some, it's just, we have some sitting in another place that's not selling. It's all over the board. There isn't really a good thing to pinpoint. The silver bullet doesn't exist because everyone has a different angle, different view of why things are not selling. You know, we have lots that some say, well, they might be too expensive. We have others that aren't. We have a good selection of lots to build on, and that's where it comes down to, do you incentivize a homeowner wanting to build? But with rates going up, that is as it should have slowed down building. It's kind of curbed us a little bit, but we're really not seeing a lot even for multiplex or anything like that. For a while, that was hot and heavy, and 140, I mean, it was filling, but we're not seeing that really take off either. So I don't know, Bill, if you have any comments, kind of what you're seeing from...
I still think that what we're... What we really need to be doing is getting more multifamily housing units, and if those are owner-occupied or if those are rentals. Every time we put up buildings, since, what, '16, when we started putting up, we filled them up before they finished, and it keeps happening right through the Red Fox. 34 units were all spoken for two or months before they were finished, two or three months. And people need different kind of housing. We need townhouses, easier to get into, easier to buy, easier to rent. And when we have an opportunity, we need to show how that will work. So if we have a space, we should use it. Show it, show it can work. And maybe we have to lead that effort.
So we allowed with incentives to put a termination deadline on something like that so it doesn't, you know, live on indefinitely with the expectation that you say, we're going to do a five-year incentivization program that goes away so it's not an expectation beyond that?
I think it's all possible, but if you have another developer coming, he's going to hold your hostage and say, well, you did that for them. We're not building unless we get that. And it really does. Once you take the lid off, you can't put things back in. We've resisted and resisted because we've been able to and still grow, but houses are just not getting built. There's just handfuls that are being done, and yes, I think supply costs are some of it, but there's some ungodly houses being built or selling, and the ones that are building are being sold. So I can't believe that it's, nobody's going to buy it because it's too expensive. They're still getting bought and purchased as soon as they're done, the new ones that are coming. It's just, I don't know how to get the builders that are here to jump in and start building no more than we get the developers that are here to borrow more ground, which may sit possibly idle too. Again, it's time value of money. If it's just going to sit there, why would I develop it?
And we're also looking at, you know, you talk about affordable. True affordable is going to be pretty small, and people don't want them, don't want to spend them near them. And so you have to come up with ways to do projects that will meet that need. There's plenty of people doing it. The prisons are doing a program where they're building two and three bedroom units that they... The houses that they bring and put them on a slab or a basement. They're trying to really promote that project. It's not where a lot of people in this community would live, but there's a lot of people that would love to live there. It's a place that they could... It isn't a... They can't afford the ones that we're building now. And yet, we're sort of, we're not in that market at all. We really don't have any of that kind of market right here, except for the center of town, which does get filled up and fixed up, and it's nice to see the old rentals turn into single-family homes again, and people doing work with them. So I don't know. And there's people building other places. Now, they're not building necessarily in the county seat towns like us. They're building in central Iowa. They're building in the big counties. And we can't stop that. All we can do is know that we have people that want to be here, so how do we reach what they need? And I don't think we can hand them $1,000 or $5,000 because all it does is reduce their down payment. It doesn't really get the builders moving, the developers moving, to do the right kinds of units. I mean, I'd like to see bigger houses too, but I'd like to see some small ones too. I'd like to see them somewhere.
So has the Economic Development Commission hosted builders and developers to talk about this and figure out what are the obstacles and... Because, you know, I...
I'll say we do.
I mean, the committee, the commission.
We meet once a month, or once every other month mostly for an hour. So it's really, it's staff that's been doing that. We've tried to reach out to builders. We talk to them. We find out what their hesitations are, why they're not doing it, and some of the things we can't solve, but...
But I mean, I guess just to hear what they have to say and to have a discussion with them. I think, you know, I think if I was going to be in favor of incentives, I'd be in favor of incentives for true affordable housing.
Right.
Right? Like the Irving site we talked about. Do we need either a tastefully designed, you know, aesthetically pleasing town home development, right? Or smaller houses? But because we do, we need a true affordable housing, not more 500, $600,000 houses because people can't afford that. And so if I was going to favor incentives, and I don't even know what menu of incentives towns offer, but that's the type of housing that I would incentivize and...
So Irving School is a good example of, there's a lot of communities taking advantage of the housing credits, and you can get up to $25,000, $30,000 per unit to do these, and you can do them for people that are buying them, not people that are renting them.
But for what type of housing? I mean, I'm not familiar with that.
You can be creative about it.
But I mean, for certain buy incomes for buyers, or I'm not sure what you're talking about.
There's a price limit. There's a price limit to like two sixty.
Okay.
Yeah. So you have to, so it has to be modest.
Modest, yeah.
Right. So townhomes fit that bill, smaller homes fit that bill, apartments fit that bill. And those are the things that people are buying or building because they get that credit on the units.
But we still see houses four or five hundred thousand getting built, and they're selling.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
It's not that people can't afford them, they're buying them and they're selling them.
But I'm just saying, if we as a city are going to incentivize people, right? Or offer something to them, I, it would sit better with me to do it for, you know, as starter homes, families that are trying to move in, you know, young people with their first professional job, whatever it is, right? To help them, help the builders do that, so they're truly affordable for people.
And every time we've talked to builders, they say, well, I have plans for townhouses, I could do them. I'd be interested in doing them. And we can never get that, we can never get any further than that. Because we have to get into the idea that you have to be a developer, you have to say, I'm going to do fifteen units, I'm going to do twenty-five units or whatever it is. And then you have to put your, you have to put your money up, because you have to apply for those grants, you have to see if you can get them. And then we can see if there's a location that people won't keep us from doing it. Because they don't want it next to them. And there's got to be places that we can do these that will fit in and everybody will like the fact that they're there.
Well, you're never going to get everybody to like anything, right? So.
I had the opportunity at the Blackout Gaming Association event a couple of weeks ago, Garrett happened to be there. But I talked to Ally Parrish with the Habitat for Humanity. Now, outside of town, they're doing their last build, they're in the progress of that. And they are looking for opportunities in Breamer County specifically. And we're in a position that if we want to engage with them for something in our community, we're probably going to be vying against Sumner as far as in Breamer County. So those are some options that exist if we had space, or if that was for something for the Irving site to do there. I don't know, but I know that there's an opportunity that really is specifically for those types of opportunities.
Well, I guess, just to bluntly say, if we couldn't get townhomes in there, people are going to lose their mind. You put Habitat for Humanity there. And that's the problem with some of this community is everybody's so anti, something next to me, I don't like that. And we run into it time and time again, and it's frustrating. How many times we beat Irving School Site to death now? Bid it out, all negativity, zero bidders, nobody wanted to touch it. And it's because it comes right back to here. We either have an issue or we don't have an issue. If you don't have an issue, I don't want to talk about it anymore. If we have an issue, then we need to do something to deal with it. And quit just kicking it, arguing about it, get behind it and do it. And if one or two people don't like it, then I guess they don't like it. But to let that thwart what's going to be positive for fifteen or twenty families or create how many million in value, to not do that, it's getting kind of ridiculous. And we're wasting how much time we're on and staff time just spinning in circles because we can't get anywhere. So that's, I'm off my soapbox, but that is a frustration that we can't get past, because we just can't seem to get anything moving. And it's one of the few sites we have that we actually own and can make a difference on. We don't have to go to a developer, a buyer and spend forty thousand dollars on an acre of ground because they think there's gold in it. All of a sudden, that's what you got to pay, nobody's going to pay that. And that's what we're struggling with.
I do think we should develop it. I mean, I do think the Irving site should have homes on it. It makes sense, you know, I mean, there's going to be a beautiful park three blocks away to the south. And we, it's prime territory, so I do think we should develop it.
We had aerial photos from our drone of the site and looking out, which you can see in the background is Walgreens and Fairway and the downtown businesses, how close you are and how easy it is to then participate and be downtown, walk around downtown. And that's, we just really think that's a good identification of a spot that works and that we could show something new and people will want it and will sell.
I think the biggest pushback for that neighborhood is not wanting a big apartment building again, you know. I know that they necessarily didn't like the townhouse idea either, but the biggest one was they wanted more permanent residency or something, maybe houses, smaller houses that again, fit the area. But I see, you know, there's, they did not want apartments. That was the biggest.
And we never really wanted to propose apartments, we wanted duplexes or triplexes at most. I mean, it fits there, and that's where the housing is in a lot of areas that's, my kids have lived in that. There's a lot of people that really enjoy not mowing and not shoveling and walking to the roads.
And you could probably do that with a small, single houses, small single houses as well. You know, sometimes people don't necessarily want a big yard to mow, and they don't necessarily want a huge house to clean. You know, but they also don't necessarily want to be attached to anybody either.
But that means you only have five, I mean, instead of twelve.
It's what's cost effective for the territory.
Yeah, and I think the twelve is a number that kind of scared the neighborhood as well, because that was a lot of traffic.
Could have been twenty-five, it fit.
Well, it could have been an elementary school, which is what it used to be. With a lot of traffic.
There was a lot of traffic.
And a lot of sewage, right? So, I mean, I think you're going to, it's really hard, you want to be respectful to the neighborhood, but we also have to make decisions that are best for the city as a whole.
You know, the problem that we have over there, and we're specifically talking about the Irving site, that we did a crappy job of bringing the neighborhood in to explain what it was we were looking at doing. We basically had a meeting that said, this is what we're going to build, and you're either going to like it or not like it, but tough because this is what we're going to build.
I disagree with that.
We set everybody off immediately, they got really defensive. I think most of the people that I talked to, the people that were really opposed to what we were looking at doing, were open to the fact of having housing built there. They just wanted to have some input on what it would look like. And I think that another go around at this, where we start by having people in the neighborhood come to a meeting and say, okay, what would you like to have there? What would you like to see? Here's some options, here's some really nice looking townhomes, here's some duplexes. Would you be okay with this kind of stuff? Rather than say, we're going to build a bunch of duplexes in this, and because we want to have people living in this area. And I understand, we don't have to do that. We can go in and do whatever the heck we want to do. But that's just not going to be an outcome that any of us are going to like. So if we're going to build housing there, and I'm a hundred percent in favor of doing something, and told people there's going to be housing there of some kind at some point, that the way we need to do that is much smarter than we did it before. And that is before we start coming up with plans to show people, before we start having architectural drawings, before we start having overheads of where all the lots and everything are going to be, we need to sit down with the people there in the neighborhood and say, okay, you know, let's discuss what we can do here so that we don't have another disaster like we did a year ago.
I disagree. I disagree with the perception of that meeting. I thought that the staff did an excellent job of really predicting every obstacle that the neighborhood was going to bring.
They were frightened when they saw.
Change makes people anxious, right? But I thought that the, I thought the staff did a good job, and people were heard. And people did not seem afraid at all to give feedback, right? And I think if you ask them what they want, they want nothing.
No, no, that's absolutely.
At first, they wanted.
I heard it totally differently.
What I heard a lot of people asking for was nineteen fifty's housing. They wanted single family homes that they could build for eighty thousand dollars. They wanted single family homes, but they didn't want single family homes that would raise the property values. And that was the problem, was they weren't making the connection between, if you build single family housing, there are going to be three hundred thousand dollar buildings. And that was the connection that I think we failed to make with the community, is saying, you can either have affordable housing, or you can have single family units, but you can't do both. I mean, and I think we need to acknowledge that if we want affordable housing, it's going to be townhomes. I mean, that's just the only way to build affordable housing these days. And I think that was the connection we failed to make, was that they had a dream of what they wanted, and those dreams like just are fifty years ago.
I think you're wrong, I think they had a fear of what they did not want. And they were afraid that what they did not want was going to be a big, a three or four story tall apartment complex with hundreds of people in there and all kinds of cars and all that. And I know that's not what we were talking about, okay? I understand that, that's not what we were talking about, but that's the fear that they had. And that's why that program didn't go forward. It can go forward if we make sure that those kinds of concerns are addressed right from the start. It says, we're not going to have that kind of development. Now let's work together and see what we can do to make things work out. I don't think that they were expecting to have three hundred thousand dollar homes in those lots, nobody's expecting that.
Well, I don't think they want that is the problem. If they do that, those are going to be the most expensive houses, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's not, that's not going to happen.
That's not what they want, but the problem is I don't think they can build single family housing without it being like at that level.
Well, I think that they were reassured that we weren't talking about a three story apartment building, right? We were trying to hide driveways and parking behind houses so that it wouldn't ruin the look. I think that the, unfortunately, the picture that was given, just an example of townhomes, really didn't fit with the aesthetic, with the aesthetic nature of that neighborhood. But I think anytime that you're presenting change to people, it takes more than one meeting, right? And so it takes multiple sessions of sitting down. I think that we have to rely on expertise of the city to guide the discussion of what's going to go there. If every time we want to make some sort of development, I don't care if it's the golf course or a subdivision or whatever, we call a town hall meeting for that, it's going to be really tough to get things done. I'm not saying you don't get input from people, but we're the ones who are elected to make the decisions on behalf of people, right? So I do think it's worth sitting down with the neighborhood and talking to them again about, here's our dilemma, right? We have this open space, we want to add housing, that's a problem for this town. We need it so that it's affordable for people who aren't necessarily doctors like me, lawyers, whoever, right? But can afford a home, and here's our options, right? Our options are not, you know, each single family unless they're small. And that's going to cater to a certain market too. So I think it is worth talking to the neighborhood, but ultimately, we have to decide. And you can't, we can't rely on a group consensus every time we have to make a decision like this, you know.
I have to say one thing, because we had two meetings with the neighborhood, we invited them to on Zoom, and we had people participate.
Yeah.
And then we came back with the ideas that we had already run by them to you. And then, but they then, they had found out what they were going to do, so they got people riled up about that. And in my mind, it was really kind of a difficult thing for us to deal with, because we addressed every concern they raised in those meetings, every concern. It was owner occupied, it, I mean, it wasn't an apartment building, the cars were coming in two different places and that's it. And twelve units is still not very many people, we're talking about how much traffic it's going to be from that group of people. So it's, you know, we couldn't do any more than that, and we had to give some idea of what we were talking about. We had to have some pictures, and guess what? Pinterest is about the best way I can figure out how to give you some idea of what they might look like. I'm not, I wasn't trying to present what we were going to put there. It was, this is what they could look like, and you can envision those kind of things. So we had, we had a few people from the neighborhood work with us.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was great, and even the ones disagreed with us. And we put her on the group that met.
Right.
And, you know, she still didn't, I mean, they didn't come around as much, you know, to say, we agree with you and we want to do that now. But at least they understood it and they could ask us questions, and we've always been open that way. And we'll continue to do that as much as we can.
I just think it's really, it's impossible to get a hundred percent consensus on anything, right? Especially that involves change.
Fifty-one percent is all I want, I don't care about the other forty-nine. I mean, it's just, that's the point where we are.
Well, I care about the other forty-nine percent. To move forward.
Because nothing gets done if we worry about all the others that are out there.
Yeah.
Because we're regurgitating that same discussion from, oh my God, it makes me almost ill thinking about it, because it's the exact same thing we said then, nothing has changed.
Well, ultimately, we want to put homes there, so we, you know, ultimately, homes are going to go there. Your input to the neighborhood, what types would you like to see? We already kind of know that, but to reaffirm that, but.
Why does that never get to decide that? This is a private individual that owned it, would we be expecting them to have to go and cater to everybody around them to decide what I can or can't build there? Why do those handful of people get to decide who can and can't live there?
Why would we give them input on the very first time then?
Well, there was, because there was a zoning change, there was a requirement that had changed from R2 to R3.
It's a public hearing for the zoning.
Because otherwise, it was just single family zone.
I wanted to go over here to Rod.
There's not a requirement to get everybody's consent to do this, but I think that we have an obligation to get the neighborhood input. Because it's their neighborhood, they've been living there, they own the property there. I think we need to get their input, maybe not their consent, but at least their understanding of what we're doing. And we did not do that, we did, it did not happen. I'm the council rep for that area, I wasn't even invited to these meetings. So, you know, the coordination wasn't there, the communication wasn't there. And if we're going to do this right, we need to do it right by making sure that we invite people to meetings that we can get their input, listen to what they have to say, make them understand that even if what we're going to do is not what they are approving of, why we're doing it. And we're not just doing it because we can do it.
Yeah, I guess I had a totally different impression of those meetings, because I thought, I thought they were pretty well attended by the neighborhood, I thought people were very forthright about what they thought. Questions were asked and answered, and I just didn't have that impression at all. I mean, I somehow knew about the meeting, I was there, and I'm, you know, so I think we did know about the meeting, the zoning change meeting and then the second one. So, you know, I think there needs to be housing there, I think we need to make it affordable. And if that means hopefully nice looking townhomes, then that's what I think we ought to do. And I think we do want input from the neighborhood, but again, ultimately, it's us that has to make that decision.
I would like to suggest that rather than using the term affordable, because people have a real connotation of what affordable means, that we use the word modest instead. I think it doesn't have as much of a negative connotation, because affordable sounds cheap, you know.
Affordable is relative.
It's relative.
Attainable is what we.
But you have, there is a connotation to the word affordable. And I think that that sets people up right off the bat. I think, and maybe it's too late to change our nomenclature at this point, but I would prefer that we use the term modest. I think that's what we're looking at, we're looking at modest housing. We're not looking at premier housing, we're not looking at luxury housing, we're looking at modest homes, whether it be single family, duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhomes, whatever. And I personally like the idea of townhomes. I told Bill when this first came up, that I thought that was a good idea if we could find a design that was commensurate with the neighborhood. And I think that if we still do that, I think townhomes are still a great idea. I think that we can sell the community on townhomes. I just don't think that it's something that we can dictate to the community that there's going to be townhomes there.
Why not?
Because I think it's better if we sell them on the idea rather than force the idea on them.
So what are your suggestions for how to sell it to them?
We have meetings. We decide, okay, we're going to develop this thing, let's get everybody together. One of the problems we had was that we had to use Zoom meetings, which were really terrible for having interpersonal interactions. We actually have some meetings, the people that live right around that neighborhood, come to the meeting, let's talk a little bit about what we're doing. You know, we can have some pictures, we can have some drawings, but make sure they understand that's not what it might, that's probably not what it's going to look like. You know, we can talk, people have issues. A lot of the issues that were coming up were people just throwing stuff at the wall to see what would stick. I mean, I've done that too, you know, you're looking at the sewer, you're looking at traffic or some noise. I mean, that's stuff that people always bring up. And, you know, that's just to say, well, look at all of this stuff. I think the bottom line is people just wanted a development that was appropriate for the neighborhood. And I think that that's something we can hear. I think that's something that is attainable. But I think for us to do this without having a real bad taste in people's mouths, I'll put it that way, is that we really need to work with the neighborhood and make sure they understand why we're doing what, the things that we're doing.
I would say I kind of see Rod's point, you know, when the earthworks started up on the Anna Estates, the number of messages and the couple of phone calls that I got the day that the machines started, you know, turning dirt, like what the heck is going on here? They weren't in tune with what that project was, they hadn't followed the, you know, the noise in the community about the wonderful things that Bartles was doing with that addition out there. And the last thing that they remembered was the talk of Section Eight, you know, multifamily residential going out there, and you know, everybody, even the petitions that were filed against it in that neighborhood.
Against Section 8 housing?
That, that's what was thrown around. I mean, that, whether, that's not what it was, but that's what it was articulated to be.
That's a problem, especially if our slogan is welcome home. Are you only welcome here if you don't need Section 8 housing?
Right.
Well, that's the stuff that happens if we don't communicate.
Quote-unquote affordable housing.
If we do not communicate to the community about what is going on, people assume and then they shout out this and that and whatever, and that's when stuff happens. People get angry and things get made up and, and then you hear back. So that is why we need to be forward and, and say, this is what we are doing right away, not keep things under the, under the table and then boom, something happens.
But I think we did, we did invite people to the neighborhood, they were given a clear understanding of what our ideas were, so I don't, I don't think it was secret or hidden. I think people change, change.
That was not, I was at that point.
People are very anxious, and I think that, um, you know, it often takes repeated discussions and, and sometimes people come on board, sometimes people understand it but disagree, sometimes people don't hear anything besides, aren't my neighborhood's going to change and I don't like it, right? And so I think that, um, we do have an obligation to communicate, we do have an obligation to get input, but we also have an obligation to make decisions that help our city move forward. And sometimes, most of the time, you're not going to get 100% buy-in. And so I'm fine with meeting again with the neighborhood and listening, but I think we need to move forward and develop that property because it's, it's, nothing is happening there. And, and we've identified, we need, we need housing, we need, um, you know, more tax revenue, all the things that that property could get us.
And I think it has to start with the rezoning because nobody was able to, was interested in even looking at it when it isn't R3 already. Because they just, they said, well, we're not going to do an R, we're not going to do a single-family development.
Yeah.
So it has to be R3 or we're not even going to talk to you about it.
I do think maybe at the next ED meeting might be good to really kind of dig into housing a little bit. I mean, yeah, we'll do something with the Irving property, but, but, but then what? You know, we've got surrounding communities, states with some pretty, pretty hefty outflows and, um, it'd be great if we had builders and developers that, that, that could, that could provide for that. I, I'm not sure we're going to see that happen, but I, I think we're going to see growth no matter what, but. It's also, what, you know, what's, what's, what's our runway going to look like here? And I think that could be a, a good discussion for, for, for that team to have, for sure.
It's also about property owners. I mean, the people who want to just make money on the sale of land.
Mm-hmm.
If it goes, if it goes double in price in a year, developers aren't going to buy it.
Right.
And I think the, you know, the housing market's a bit divorced from reality too. I mean, people are buying $400,000 homes, but I'm not positive they can afford them. So. And, you know, the Fed keeps raising rates here, so they seem to be determined to bust that up a little bit. So I think some patience would be good right now.
So I got two things. Uh, one, I just want to go back to James's, um, comment in response to, I don't want anybody to take the, the Habitat for Humanity out of context of what it is or what it isn't. Um, I don't want anybody to assume that, that we believe that Habitat homes would never be able to fit within our community.
And so you know there, I don't believe that, but there's people in this community to do.
Right.
And that's the loud ones that make up things and run crazy and run wild and that's what happens.
That's just what I wanted to articulate here.
And see the fortunate side of what happens in this community.
That's what I wanted to articulate here, that it wasn't your, your statement that they don't fit here. Because I know wonderful people that live out at the airbase, um, that are, you know, wonderful people in our community, they take care of their home, that kind of thing.
Computer.
Yeah. Uh, second thing is, is as we have new amenities in our community in the future, hopefully a pool, the golf course improvements, um, everything that we've done in this community with, in the elementaries coming online, all of those wonderful things, this is going to continue to be a problem. We're not going to solve it tonight. Um, but I do look forward to having this on future agendas to come to some conclusions on what we can do to, to move forward with the Irving property, other properties, um, and just being open-minded as a whole, not only council, myself and staff, but the community as well, that we can address some of these, these things together. You know, we're going to have differences, um, and we can have our opinions and share those and take them all into consideration, but then at the end of the day, say, we, we had to give and take, compromise. So we'll look forward to that. Unless there's anything else, I think we can probably move on.
I just wanted to say one thing, we kind of got away from the idea of do we provide incentives? And I guess I would just like to second the idea that if we do provide incentives, that they be targeted for the, the type of housing that the housing study said that we were most dire in need of, which was more modest types of housing. And I don't know how that can be done. I, I understand the issues, it's a slippery slope when you start providing those kinds of incentives, and I, I would hate that we have to do that. And I know housing is a statewide issue, it's not just with Waverly, it's, it's a statewide thing. So maybe it's something that we really shouldn't do, but if we do it, I think it needs to be very targeted.
Good.
Sound good? All right. Thank you very much for the engagement. We'll move on to item number three, the fiscal year ending 2024 preliminary budget discussion.
I was going to start that off with housing, but I don't. I was just going to, I was just going to mark that one up.
Let's just continue forward.
Uh.
Rod, kick it off.
No, I don't have a whole lot tonight, I hate to tell you it honestly. I just, it's been a very frustrating year to even start to formulate what a budget could look like. You know, as we look at all the different things we're talking about, whether it's supply chain issues to, you know, staffing, et cetera, we're okay on staffing now, but we will have challenges going forward. Um, we, we'll be looking at wage adjustments to try and compete going forward. We will be looking at projects that I think we're all aware, when the pool comes online and we start talking about Memorial Park, everything else is going to fall away. There's still things we have to do though in the meantime. And part of what we've been trying to talk to staff, myself, in the last week or so is what else should we, and can we get done before the pool drops? And then there we are. So there are a handful of capital projects we're working through to kind of get assembled, to get some estimates on to bring to you when we start the budget process. None of them are massive by any means, but they're all necessary, whether it's generators for a project, whether it's, uh, we're looking at the golf maintenance building because that's got to get done sometime, it's got paint falling in and that's a bad building. When do you do it? If you wait to do it at the park, you'll never get it done. Those are the things we're trying to get our hands around. And with the library having come and, and asked for the pledge of $700,000, that kind of opened up to where we may have to go to the market anyway. What else can we get done and pieced in that makes sense at the time? Because there's a lot of smaller projects we have that are going to add up, but they're going to get a lot accomplished. So we're working through that. One of the big things everybody's talking about, you know, is just inflation in general. And I know the predictions are it's going to go down next year, I think that's optimistic somewhat, I just don't know how far. But I don't know if it's going to make it any easier on our vehicles, and that's one of the few things I want to talk about tonight is, we're really struggling to get any kind of vehicles. And we talked to Mark out the shop, we talked to the staff. We'll be sitting waiting for a year, how long was it rich for the vehicles? And then they just canceled them last week. They're supposed to be here next week. And they canceled the orders. Who does that? I mean, we've been waiting for, gone, now we start over. We've pushed vehicles off, we've pushed vehicles off for years now because we simply can't get them. We have some in the queue for over a year waiting on a chassis, well, it's not here. We're not going to be able to even get it. And we have vehicles that are 20 years old running around with rusty fenders falling off them. It's not sitting well because we just can't work the markets. So what we may be starting to look at, and I'm going to ask for your blessing, um, we want to start looking at possibly used vehicles. They're on the markets, they're sitting right there, we found a bunch of them, they're a year or two old, less than 10, 15,000 miles on them. I'd rather have that and pay the same amount as a maybe for the next 10 months and hoping wait, because that's what we're starting to get into. Or if the state bids open up, they're for 48 hours, there's a flood of orders, you might be in them, you might not be in them, they might cancel them, it might be next year's build. We can't even, we can't get vehicles. Some of these are two years out, we should have ordered them last year for the next year we're building, and we still are on the fence about how we're going to get them. So we may be going down that road. The part that kind of hit some of you is, if we do that and we get low bids, they're only going to guarantee them for so long. By the time we get them to U.S. Council to approve, we've already lost them because it can take two weeks, three weeks, depending on the timing to get them. So dear grace, you know, we would like to be able to have the authority to actually purchase a used vehicle if it's budgeted, so we can actually get a few of these. And we don't have a lot of them, we're talking a handful at worst case. Right now, we can't get any.
Talking police vehicles or are we talking about police?
Everywhere. Uh, police would not be, because those have to be new, that's a state bid.
Okay.
We're going to try again in December, I guess, and see if they'll give them to us at time.
Aren't we doing lease?
We're looking more park.
Weren't we doing lease on the?
Trucks and things for.
What's that?
Do we have a lease for the police vehicles?
We do.
Lease agreement? Yeah, okay.
But we're trying to, again, they come around every so often and like I said, they just canceled the last order, so we're trying again. But it's part of, it's more like works, it's all of our other field trucks that are, nothing spectacular, but we still need them. I mean, again, we've pushed off a year or two, some of these passed when they should have been replaced, and they're starting to get a little problematic, they're spending a little more time at the shop, they're on the road, that's not good for us either. And we're losing value on the trade-ins. Uh, we're just getting to the point where we're going to start making some adjustments in how we purchase.
But we're not talking about like the garbage trucks or the snowplows or any of those specialty vehicles.
No, the used stuff you would get, you wouldn't want.
But basically, we're talking about new.
Trucks.
Just basic, basic pickup trucks.
Truck, one tons, things that we just can't get anymore.
For the next six months or so, use is just going to be pretty, pretty lucrative there. And I, I think that new, that supply is going to, going to collapse in pretty soon.
Wouldn't you think?
I would think so.
We're struggling.
So I, I'd find what's going used if that's what you need to do.
Because we're just talking a handful.
If you can't hold out longer.
Do you feel like you should do it up to a dollar amount or to just give you guys permission to do it?
We're looking at what we've had budgeted. If we can work it within what's budgeted, we just want the authority to go and get it. So we aren't losing it to another city and other.
I'm just curious, there's places that are getting them off after a year or two years.
Yeah. Well, some of them are sitting on the lot and they may be a little more than what we needed, but they're still meeting the need, it's just, we don't need four doors, we only need two. Well, if I can get a four for about the same price, I'll take it. We're just getting to that point. And we have specifications that the mechanics are going to run, they're going to make sure they're meeting our needs, we're not going to sacrifice what we need just to get something. If it hits it, meets the need, we're going to try and go out and acquire a couple of them. Again, it's not six or seven or eight of them, it's maybe two or three. But I just want you to be aware, we're going to try and attempt to do that and kind of let you know how that comes back, if it works, if it doesn't. Otherwise, we're going to be at the mercy of just sitting there hoping.
As long as they're purple?
How do we budget that? Probably not purple. Um, specialty color takes 10 more weeks.
I mean, not used.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a budgeted item and you feel something that is appropriate.
We've just never done it before.
Yeah.
It's not something you usually see municipalities going and doing, but right now, even some of the stuff we see in the lot, it should be a $40,000 truck, the dealers have them at $66,000 or $80,000. It's just gouging us that we're not going to pay that.
I know we've approved budgeted items after we've taken delivery of them.
Sure.
Countless times, so keeping that in mind.
I mean, normally, a pretty low bid, it's going to be the lowest bid. We'll get you the documents, it's just to wait a couple of weeks to get it on for you to say, yep, that's the lowest number, we may have already lost them.
Right.
Because not everybody wants to hold them very long, they can start moving them because it's kind of where it sits. So just, that's a side note, something we're going to try and look at for just a couple of them and see how it goes. But the, the hard part too is valuations, and this is where we go back to housing briefly. You know, when you look at the market selling so fast and things are going so much higher than anticipated, we're just not sure how fast our valuations will catch up. So will we see a large spike in valuation next year, which then, of course, you won't have to rate, have as much rate to get the same funding, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It all trickles out. If not, you know, it could be kind of a difficult year as well, just because the price of everything has gone up.
Didn't they do a citywide reevaluation this year?
Countywide.
They're working on it right now, so.
Is that, do we know what that, so we don't know what that's going to be calculated by the time?
We do not. And ours will come off the January 1st.
So what you're saying is we don't want to jack up the value, the per thousand tax?
Yep.
And then behind it, all of a sudden, all these valuations come and it's a double whammy?
Right. Right. If anything, I would hope that would lower the rate, so we can start to bring that back down, or at least hold it flat, be able to gain what we can. So there's a lot of that, the factors in the formula, but that's one of the bigger unknowns that we're looking into is, is what does it look like for us? We average about 3.25% valuation. Now, some of it's been beefed up last year or two, so maybe it's closer to 1.5 to 2%. When I budget and factor, it's 1%. We try to stay very conservative, increase in value. Um, and some of it's artificial, again, it's being pushed by market rates, some of it truly is through, um, construction, although not as much lately, because we're kind of down some. But that's one of the other things we're really going to have to try and take a look at is, what are the valuations going to come in? We don't want to assume they're going to be better than they are, because you said we don't want to create a bubble that's going to burst on us when the budget comes due. So, um, things are going to be relatively flat for the most part, again, just like every other year. It's the equipment that's going to move the needle. You know, it's going to be the big equipment. The good thing for us, and we kind of talked about it last year, most of the big equipment we purchase aren't part of the taxing entities anyway, they're in roadie's tax or local option sales tax until the state takes that away from us. There are other means that we fund those with, so they won't really be as impactful as you would think. It'll be the trucks, it'll be the smaller pieces of equipment, the smaller projects that'll hit some of the budgets. But I think overall, a lot of what we're seeing, it's not going to be terrible, it's[1531.16] It's just gonna be, uh, we're waiting on insurance quotes to see what that's looking like. But it's gonna be kind of interesting to see where this all rolls out from a valuation standpoint, and we don't know until January one. So we can make a bunch of assumptions, but there's no really point in that, cause you just don't know what it's gonna turn into when it's all said and done.
I have a lot of faith in, in our directors of holding a pretty good budget.
Yep.
My years been on here, they've, they've done a really good job of, that one percent or whatever projection, keeping it. Keeping it as flat as possible, as well as the long-term planning of setting aside. A little bit at a time so that we can buy it at once, as opposed to, you know, having to come up with a whole chunk of money at one time. But yeah, it's, it's an odd year.
When I've looked at the market, so.
Salaries are gonna be.
We always check our capacity, where we were, you know, how many years ago, we were at almost eighty percent, right at our capped limit. As we sit today, even with the ball diamond bond, which, because this local option does hit our capacity, we'll be at fifty-four percent instead. So we've trimmed off almost thirty percent of our capacity and lowered it in the last how many years by rotating off more than we're adding. And that'll continue hopefully as we look at what's paying down, so we are gonna have, we have capacity to do wherever we need to. It's just continuing to hopefully pay that down, pay that down, pay that down, so we cannot be cycling up any additional debt more than we need to, so. Um, so it's kind of our goal is to get a lot of little things trimmed up, get them done, get them finished before the real big projects start. Um, even the rail trails, I've talked to Mike a bit, we've got some good estimates on some of those bridges, you know. I don't know how many times we applied for funding for Ivanhoe, Mike? And we've been unsuccessful, unfortunately. That's a bridge I wouldn't mind taking a look at. You know, we're gonna have to start replacing these eventually. I don't think we can count on the grants, I mean, obviously, Mike will continue, we've talked about, we'll keep trying and trying. But we maybe start chipping away one at a time, try and get these done, or else, I don't know if we are gonna be able to do multiple ones in a year. Um, and so it's, it's things like that that we just, we gotta start working on a little bit, instead of just holding and sitting back. Some will be projects to come up, we won't have a choice on. But while we can get them in front of us, I'd prefer to do that, so we're kind of creating that list for you to consider.
You mentioned the library, ball diamonds, maybe Ivanhoe, are there other?
Uh, it's a lot of small stuff, we're still getting quotes and estimates on. But it's, it's, um, vehicle, it's equipment, it's just things that, that we probably need to get figured in or should have had. And like I said, I'm still getting emails and quotes in on them, so I don't know dollar amounts yet. But it will not be anything massive by any means. It'll just be a lot of things get accomplished, if they're small, uh, but if you choose to do so, either or.
Back to Tim's question about the, the valuation, uh, equalization. Um, those will be issued in early twenty twenty-four. And the new assessed values will be effective January first, twenty twenty-four, and taxes payable fall of twenty-five, spring of twenty-six. So, you still got.
So we'll still see the adjustments for all the sales that have occurred, but not the overall overarching jump. So we got that to look forward to, so, um. But one of the things we are gonna try and push even harder this year is our use of technology. We're gonna try and get paperless, we're gonna try and cut down man-hours of doing a lot of things. I've talked about a bit, finance, there are some things we're trying to do there to start getting rid of scanned paper, paper checks, I mean, just get rid of all of it. And try and start getting to where we're not spending as much time doing tedious things that we have to, because of records retention, et cetera. We wanna start getting the stuff that automatically scans through, it's paperless, it's just a better use of technology that we, we think are out there. And so you may see more technology asks, software hardware, to advance some of these systems forward, uh, so we can be a little more efficient with the same or less staff. I don't think we have a lot of staff requests, or something we're gonna look at. And that stems from our struggle with seasonals. I mean, Garrett can let you know, basically in mid-August, we lose everybody that we have, except our regular full-time guys. Who now have to take on a lot of the duties our fifteen seasonals were doing. How does that happen? So you weigh out, is a full-time body better than five seasonals that we can't keep for more than two months? Those are the things we're gonna try and get our hands on too, and start to weigh out and have a conversation with you as well, but. That's, that's kind of the normal stuff we would look at, but with the markets the way they are and the hiring issues we've had, whether it's lifeguards or, uh, seasonal work or just work in general. We're having to get a lot more creative than we used to. And it's, that's citywide, it's statewide, a lot of my peers talking about the same type of thing. We're all facing the same issues. But how to handle them, it all depends on kind of what you're comfortable with.
Um, got just one question.
Sure.
As Ann had, um, pointed out, really the only big new project that we're probably looking at budgeting for at this point is the library.
Right.
And I, I guess, it kind of surprised me that that came up really quickly. I wasn't a re, uh, didn't know that they were looking at doing that kind of remodeling, but. Is there anything with the work with MSA? Because they'll hopefully be finishing up sometime in the next month or two. Any projects there that we need to start hopping into already in the next budget year?
That's a great question, and I wish I had a better answer. When I look at the procedure, how that's gonna probably go, if they can get everything accomplished by December, like they're claiming they can. All the plans, we'll have to dissect what they look like, whether it's playground equipment, whether it's park issues or pickleball courts, or whatever it might be. What we'll have to figure out also is, is where does the money go in that plan? And I think we can all agree, it's probably the pool. So there'll be a referendum that probably has to pass before we get too far down the road, cause if it doesn't, well, then we gotta regroup a little bit and figure out, okay, what's that look like now? And so I think that's probably where we're gonna focus our efforts is, what does the pool look like, what are some possible runnings, what it could be? And let's get that to the public to see if they're in favor going forward. Uh, otherwise, it'll be engineering, um, eventually demolition, those kind of things that would come ahead of time. But I expect that to be maybe fiscal twenty-five to get too deep into that. Um, because again, we gotta figure out how we're gonna fund this, how we're gonna phase it, what the pool even looks like from a referendum standpoint. Have, do there have to be other referendums for playgrounds, for golf, or who knows what? And I think that's what we're, uh, I've actually talked to the bond attorneys, actually this morning and a little later in the week. To try and get a handle on what we do and don't have to legally do as far as how that's gonna work. But we're still a little far out from knowing what the final concept's gonna be. Cause some of the stuff we've seen already is not high-dollar things to make trails and make this and that, it's not. But it still adds up in the end, parking lots and shelters and four or five of those do tend to add up.
Are, are, are you thinking that those projects are something that we'll try to do? In, in one effort, uh, you know, Memorial Park redo, or? I mean, it doesn't look to me like most of the things that they're recommending, other than maybe the pool, are things that really can be phased all that easily.
Right. And the pool, it's something where, do you, if you have to go to the market, oh God, um. Do you go over two fiscal years back-to-back with July one? Do you do a partial with local option sales tax? Do you extend that out? How many more years, state doesn't take it? Do you, I mean, there's a whole lot of variety of options, what you can do. The biggest thing is it, two million, is it ten million? Cause that makes a difference in what do you do? Do you tax for it? Do you borrow for it? Do you look for more grants that aren't probably gonna be there? Do you? What do you do to get it? And I think the biggest problem we're gonna have is, is what are we doing? How much is it total? Legally, how do we get through that process? How many years could it take? But I, I don't disagree, if something we need to do in one big swoop, then how do we pay for it?
Yeah.
And what's it look like? Because if you look at, I think we average about a quarter on the levy for a million dollars, so say it's a ten million dollar pool, it's two and a half dollars on the levy. Quick math, that's what that looks like, without anything else. That, that makes my chest hurt. Um, that's a lot.
Yeah.
At one time.
Yeah.
For one thing. So I don't know how we would end up doing that, but that's where we're gonna have to look at all of our sources too. I think there are some grants and some opportunities out there for some of those, but it's still too early to kind of know how much we're talking about here. They're still trying to figure out what it looks like, how big it is, where it's gonna be, um, what's around it. Cause playgrounds, we've talked before, they're not cheap either. You look at Kids Kingdom from way back, you do something that big or bigger, that could be seven figures.
And then you look at.
Big.
Are you building a new one while the other one's functional?
Right.
Or do you go without for a year?
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, the playground we're putting in the ball diamonds area, while it's all inclusive, it's a half million dollars. It's not gonna be as big as you think it is. That's what those are, and it's the ground prep, it's the new requirements, the guidelines, it's all more complicated now. Everything just costs a lot of money right now, today, so. Once they get that hammered out, that's gonna be our next goal, then is, is maybe not funding this budget with it, but probably talking through what we do know. And then the budget after, I think you're gonna be looking at engineering, demolition, starting.
Right.
And getting a lot of it taken out. So we still could be about a year out. Cause you're gonna want, again, we talked about the community, you're gonna want to have input even after the fact, even though we've had, how many pop-up meetings they've had. Surveys and everything else, it still won't be enough. There's still gonna be somebody, gonna be a group that's the way it is, and so you're gonna have to combat that and kind of look at, this is what it looks like for everybody. And then, like I said, funding will be the key. We're only limited, know so many sources. But we've got what we've got. It really depends on how much. But yeah, if we can phase it over multiple, you know, maybe the pool itself goes in, maybe the surrounding apron, the splash pads another year, maybe it's, I guess it depends on what they come up with. Be amazed if we can chop up and put into other projects, but, uh, there's always the legality side of it and the actual financial impact. And that's what we've talked about since the first day of us here. It's not a matter of if you can do it, it's also should you do it, and what's the impact if you do? Cause there's a lot of stuff we can just do whenever you wanna do it, but it's, is that the right thing to do now? What's it cost? And so, there's always a way. It's just getting stomach ache, cause sometimes it's not pretty.
The other, the other big ticket one that's sitting out there is the Shepherd River.
Yeah.
That's, that's the other one that's not necessarily gonna have a lot of grant opportunities.
I have very little confidence that we will be able to finish Memorial Park before we have to replace this. So I think that we're gonna have, I mean, as long as it's gonna take to do Memorial Park, I mean, I don't know if that's five, ten years. But I don't think this bridge is gonna be here for ten years. I don't think it's gonna survive that long. I mean, I'll, I'll trust Mike, Chair of the Engineer, to give me the actual date when the time comes. He'll, he'll give us a good six, six-month warning before it's time to replace it.
After, after he's retired.
When the staff don't wanna hang the Christmas wreath out there anymore.
No, you're right. Those are the things, again, that we're trying to chip away at, because we know that big bridge is gonna be looming, and what do you do with that?
And unlike the rumors that seem to be fluctuating around town, I don't think there's anyone on the city council who wants to remove it and not replace it, so.
Rumor.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I'm not on social media.
Yes. I think it's, they, they all believe it's gonna go the same way the Green Bridge went, so.
Well, it's wood, it's not steel, it's not even the same thing. It's not even the same. So.
Not even green.
Questions, comments? You know, we've, we've thrown a lot at you. It's gonna be an odd year, just because so much is unknown, and we're not even able to really start to. Put assumptions out there, start to work models of what could be, cause we just really don't know. Even from just a year ago, it is a very different landscape, whether it is purchasing or supply chain, or. You know, we're looking probably two years out on our vehicles and everything now, because we know we can't get them. So you may see more vehicles added that we know we're not gonna touch in this fiscal year, but we're gonna be ordering them for the fiscal year after that. And if we have time, we'll get into maybe a multi-year plan as to what would the next year look like, and here's what's slated. Do you wanna commit to trying to get these in now, cause it's a year and a half lead time, or it's two years? And that's unfortunately kind of where we're sitting. I do think it'll crack, like Matt is right, it's just how fast.
I think it's that planning that keeps us in such good financial standing.
Sure.
You know, the fact that you're looking to, let's clean up whatever we can do before the Memorial Park is looming ahead of us, because you're right. Once that gets going, that's gonna be about all we're gonna be. Which is okay, that's why we, you know, we did all the infrastructure projects we did over the last five to ten years.
And even the other big project, and I've talked to Garrett about this too, you know, we have the headquarters that we're trying to revamp. A little bit here, a little bit here, it could take us, I don't know how many years, and that's such an easy one to just, well, I'll hold that one off for another year and another year. Do we just figure out how much it is and do it done, check the box, be finished? Yes. I gotta believe that doing it a year versus trying to do it over the next five years, how far is that money really gonna go as it starts to get higher and higher, costs, it continues to happen? We're gonna end up losing out in the long run.
Plus the remobilization.
It is. Every year they have to come back, do another small piece, another piece, another piece, another piece. We're trying to be foolproof and do that, but yet, at some point, we just gotta get it done. Or it's just gonna linger and linger and linger, and then we have all kinds of issues with storage and staffing, and it just is. So those are the projects we'll bring back to you, uh, once we get a better handle on some costing. And if not plan them in this year, the next year, it all depends on what happens with, uh, Memorial Park. Cause I do think there'll be a year of engineering demolition that'll take that, and the reconstruction will start probably even the year after that, to start rebuilding some of that. But again, pool's the driver. So we'll see when the referendum can be done, what it looks like, how much. I know it can be in March, May, August, November. Those are the four times you can have a referendum, so.
March, May, August.
And I suspect, you know, we're gonna lay this budget out, and unfortunately, we're gonna have to be real flexible again, cause it's gonna be shaky.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Um, we're gonna do our best to plan it, but again, we're gonna be mercy of a lot of mechanisms we can't alter or change.
But I think doing these small, necessary projects to clear the path as much as we can, it's a smart approach.
Try and get out in front, because otherwise, and we've talked about it before, whether it's same with road projects, some of the ones we did earlier than we wanted. Can it wait four more years till this is done and out of the way? And I don't think a lot of these are missing stuff. I don't think it can.
I think that's, when you say small, necessary projects, I think that we need to remember that when we're funding things. There are a few things out there that maybe are not necessary at this moment, but the infrastructure you're talking about that needs to be done, that needs to be prioritized. And I know I said this before, the projects that we already have going on need to be prioritized and not add on additional. Projects that maybe are not necessary, so, um, you know, there are a few individual things out there that I myself would love. To have happen, but then I think about it, I'm like, really, is this the time for that? Probably not. Because it's not necessary. Um, buildings aren't falling down in certain areas, um, and.
Some are.
Some are. No, and I'm talking about some of the.
Couple of, glad we go walk you through.
The ones that need to be done, need to be done, but, and, and I guess I'm just gonna say it, I absolutely love the library, and I think it is wonderful, and I think it is a huge hotspot. And I'm gonna get a ton of negative response and feedback right now, but is that necessary that we, we do that this year? Is that absolutely necessary? You know, it's, we need that, the library, and I think it's a staple in this community, but spending seven hundred thousand dollars on that right now, when we have. Buildings falling down and paint falling down and, you know, and we still have our project, um, with the ball diamonds out there, should we be adding additional projects right now? Um, you know, is that the time? So just playing devil's advocate here, and, um, I'm sure I'll get a lot of comments and backlash on that.
When will we get an update on the waterworks building? Like their final opinion about salvageability?
We've had some conferences with, uh, Farnsworth, we're trying to get a handle on what the concrete repair looks like. You know, what to do with the hydro room, it's got the holes in it, the water, and how do you look at that? So there's a lot of moving parts to that, because. If we can restore it outstanding, if you choose not to, what's the cost of demolition? We don't know that. And then you still have the controls for the dam in there.
Right.
You still have it hooked onto the dam where the hydras are, that's still there too, that building. You can't just take that away. It's gotta be then figured out, so.
So you think we'll have something before we start talking budget?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm, I'm hoping by mid-November latest that we have some solid numbers to at least really start to wrap our head around. We just wanna make sure of every scenario that we can think of to give you options to what this looks like in the end. But none of it's easy, it's complicated no matter what you do. Cause even deciding not to do it, now it's complicated, because there's things you will have to do even if you don't do that. Cause you have to preserve some of those items, it just doesn't go away. It's literally hooked into the dam, so you have to shore that up somehow and fix it. It's just how much and how far and how, and that's the stuff we're still kinda getting our hands on, so. So it's coming, that's another unknown, which, yeah, it's been interesting walking through that, so. I wish it was simpler, that, that's a tough one too. You know, you talk, talking hundred-year-old structures, and you just don't know, so. But, anything else? Budget, comments, questions, any things you want us to look at, consider, et cetera? I mean, I feel like we're gonna do all we can to bring you a similar budget, but there's gonna be a lot of outliers, a lot of contingent upon, a lot of what-ifs, because we just don't know. And then a lot of it's what we talked about tonight, whether it be purchasing, whether it be technology, whether it be, you know, supply chain issues in itself. Cause some of the projects we already have approved, we're now waiting for half a year, because they're specialized pieces we can't get. So you hope you can get it done in time. And while, again, it's not a big deal necessarily, it goes in the reserves, you take it back out, that's all gonna be planned for though, too. And we have to figure out, that stuff on the bow's gonna get to do. You may have two or three fiscal years at one time getting worked in, because you may be finishing and auditing one, amending the next, and building a third. That's coming up in the next month or two for, you know, three fiscal years in play all at once, and that gets to be a lot of fun, but that's what we do, so. Okay. I don't have anything else, unless there's questions, Council?
Thank you.
I know one thing that we've talked about a lot in the past is the need for someone to be in charge of communications. I don't know that this is the year to add that, but I think that's something we still need to keep talking about and not forget.
Sure.
I don't wanna, with that comment, I don't want to chastise, especially with, they're right in the room, with Val here. But I think, you know, with some of the changes that we've seen and the additions into the city and the restructuring and things. I, I think giving it a, a go for a little while and seeing with people moved around and, and job responsibilities being, um, you know, shuffled. You, you just get different people in different seats, and some of those things can happen, you know, there may be improvements. Not that anything was terrible, but we have new bodies and new seats with new ambitions potentially, and just see where they go from there, so.
No, that's fine with me. I mean, we're very pleased with the people we've hired, the promotions we've had, some of the strongest employees we've had, we've put in places that are gonna make a huge difference for the city.
Yeah.
We've brought in people to fill those other positions that may be even bigger yet.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's a good time to be here working, we have a lot of upside potential, we have a lot of stuff coming in that's gonna make this much, much smoother. And we're gonna accomplish a lot more going forward.
Yeah. As talent moves.
Absolutely.
Things change, so.
And on that topic, I'm gonna re-pitch my idea about having a, a newsletter similar to the ones that, uh, the Public Works Department puts out and, and. Utility puts out, um, that probably does not require a full-time communications person to put something like that together. It can either be done by a, a, a city employee, or it can be outsourced fairly, fairly easily too. So I'm just gonna throw that as, you know, maybe an alternative to hiring a communications person.
Okay. Good deal. All right, we'll move to Section G, the reports from boards and commissions. Item one is the Economic Development Commission minutes of July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Number two is Human Equity and Diversity Commission minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. The Golf Commission minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the Airport Commission minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-two, all received into the record. Move into Section H, the staff updates.
Just real quick, uh, Candlelight Walk is gonna be set for Saturday, November fifth, uh, from five o'clock until seven o'clock. We are definitely looking for volunteers again this year, so setup will start at four o'clock. And then we tear down right afterwards. So if anyone's interested in one for volunteering, or two, just to come out and participate in the Candlelight Walk. Uh, we'll look forward to seeing you on Saturday, November fifth. Parking lots, we talked about that last time, they are done. Uh, we're still keeping people off the concrete one at Coleman until, uh, we have that, the area around reseeded and the concrete's good to go. Uh, then, uh, it's been re-asphalated down at, uh, the trailhead, so that one is good to go. And then the last thing, uh, we, there was a tournament, uh, this last weekend at the Disco, Disc Golf Course, uh, sixty participants. So it's getting a lot of play down there, it's good to see. That's all I've got for you tonight.
Great. Thank you.
That's all we have, sir.
Thank you. Yes, you may.
I ask real quick for, cause don't have it, but Justin, do we have dates or times for like leaf pickup and yard waste coming up here?
Leaf pickup is currently happening right now.
Okay.
Just call it on schedule.
Yeah, yard waste sites, uh, I can't remember the date right offhand, but I will have that for you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, move forward to City Council comments, Mr. Bergen. Mr. Bergen?
I wanted to again remind people that voting is open. You can vote down at the courthouse at any time. We've got the election date coming up on November 8th, but there's certainly early voting. Tomorrow at Warburg, there is a satellite voting where you can register and vote. I mean, you'll turn in an absentee ballot. It's at the Student Center outside the Lyceum between 9:30 and 3:30. All you will need is your photo ID. They can confirm your address. It's far, it's far enough before the election that you can get your address confirmed, so all you really need is your photo ID. If you want to get that taken care of so that you stop getting quite so many phone calls, I would encourage you all to vote early. And on that, well, additionally, anyone who wants to talk city council business, I will be going to the Braemer Brewing Company one last time, they're still open on Monday nights, so I'll be there tonight.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Wolfert?
I do not have any additional comments.
Thank you. Ms. Rafi?
Nope.
Ms. Schneider? Drinkhouse?
I would just like to point out that most of my leaves are still up on my trees yet, quite a few of them are still green, so try to keep that yard waste site open as long as you possibly can. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Perfect. Ms. Wilson, did you enjoy yourself?
I did.
Good. Thank you for participating, as much as you did do, the last meeting especially, so thank you. Mr. Cangis?
At the risk of breaking out coughing again?
Well, I'll keep my comments shorted. You have a couple of things here. Just congratulations to the record of being undefeated by our football team. They take on Fort Madison this Friday as they enter playoffville. So if they win this Friday, they'll play at home one more time before going to the UniDome if they win that game. So quite nice to be at the top of the RPI ratings to be able to play at home consecutively twice if they make it that far. Trick or Treat is Monday, 31st, community-wide trick-or-treating, 5:00 to 7:30 PM. 5:30 to 7:30, sorry. On the 31st, on the 31st, everybody. On behalf of the chamber, Jack Leonard Night is this Thursday night from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM in downtown Waverly. The Holiday Open House Retail Event is on Saturday, November 12th, starting at 10:00 AM, and the Small Business Saturday Retail Event on November 26th, the day after, the day after Thanksgiving, started at 9:00 AM. And with that, I'll just say the saying, you got to give this some thought, but shop small, save small. It's not what you're saving when you shop small, but what you're saving when you shop